Okay, six thirty I'm gonna call this meeting of the Joshua City Council to order. We do have a quorum present, whole house, way to go guys. At this time, we're going to do our pledges and invocation. Once you've finished the pledges, please remain standing for the invocation. Johnny Walter is gonna lead us in the pledges and Mike Kidd will do our invocation.
.............................................
Father, we thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve our city, Lord. We thank you for the many blessings you pour down upon us. Father, we thank you for protecting this city and its first responders. And we ask that you just watch over all of us as we go through our business tonight, Lord. We ask you all these things in Jesus' precious name.
Amen.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Helen Cohen. She is our candidate for state rep, District fifty-eight. I appreciate her being here this evening. I know she's got a couple more meetings she's gotta rush out to, so Helen, thank you very much for coming up this evening.
Thank you, I just wanna introduce myself. I'm going to all of the towns and introducing myself and just letting you know I came up through local government. I'm having a summer meal and I, if I'm elected, I know my job description is state, but I would love to be a part of the local government. And I'm on my way right now to head meeting because I'm looking forward to fighting for a maybe top of the top.
Thank you very much, y'all.
Thank you for coming, it's good to meet you.
Okay, at this time, we'll move into our work session. Item number one, review and discuss questions related to the budget and financial statement for April twenty twenty-four. Mr. Peacock.
Mayor, we're a little over halfway through the year. Are running just a little over in a few areas, nothing significant to worry about. Really not anything that jumps out. Spending is down still a little below where we normally are. I will tell you that reviewing the latest tax numbers, we are overall up sixteen point eight percent in sales tax revenues. Fiscal year-to-date, one point sixty-two million is up two point three percent adjusted for inflation. It puts us at fourteen point nine overall. We are starting to see some increases there, that's starting to pick back up again, which was a, we had a couple of months that were, we declined on. That seems to be coming back, so very glad to see that. Other than that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, item number two, discuss, discussion on a draft signed ordinance, Mr. Malbonado.
Mayor, I have a patch of draft copy of these signed ordinance. Just our main reason was to bring some clarity by adding some definitions and pictures. And I believe sound more clear. And also, we've added a few, probably few signs, especially for the gentleman, the business owner, the, I guess, the March man. He had discussed some of the, or other signs that he had on the property. So we've added them into this document. It's a, within recommendations that any of you that can have.
Somebody have any discussion, comments?
I'm just curious, who, who on the staff is responsible for those permits and interpreting the ordinance? Is that you or is that somebody else? Has she looked at it? Have they looked at it?
So the staff that took part in looking at the ordinance was our permanent clerk, economic development director, our co-forestation officer, and the person of city management, the PR.
Okay, so any comments from them have been included in this draft? And they're happy with it? And they understand? And I like it?
Do you like the ordinance? We've still got some time to make changes. So I mean, if y'all, if you're confused about something or if you're not quite finished reading it.
There's a lot there.
It's a complete rewrite, so it's, it's, we started, it's nothing like the previous one.
I don't personally have any strong feelings one way or the other about particular signs. My biggest concern was the comment that staff found the existing one confusing. Or that he had said that the comment had been made to him.
The business owner did.
Yeah. So I just wanna make sure that it's clear. There is a lot there, I did not read every single word, I read a lot of it. But I like the specification of the sign, it's clearly called out with the pictures. I mean, it's very helpful because...
That's good. The pictures we wanted, I think will help more so as examples, which will help, help explain a little bit of the language has been softened quite a bit, it's explained a little better. Terry is still working his way through it, he's gonna have a few changes for it, so.
I got it Friday, it takes a little time to go through.
We're reading.
We wanted to get in front of you, but we'd like to bring it in and once we discuss with Terry his changes, we'd hope to bring this to you guys next month.
My biggest question, all the ordinances and everything are highlighted in this, are these referring to our actual ordinances? Or are those what's gotta be fine, finalized? Okay. What I thought, but I wanted to make sure. Anybody else have any other questions?
I appreciate the effort.
Guys did an excellent job.
No, it's a, it's a solid effort. It's, it's a good, got a real good start to, I mean, this is how we all need to make them. Not saying we need to rewrite them all, but not again.
Okay, for the questions, we'll move on to item three, discuss and receive board updates. Type A economic. How the meeting go?
I'm just updates, Taco Bell is on the way. The building is down, the yellow house is down, and they're doing their things.
The type B? Anything from type B?
We should park updates.
How are we looking?
Well, I take that back. We're looking at some options for July fourth. They expressed an interest in doing something, the chamber reached out to us about partnering us in things. We're looking at a couple of options. Trying to get away from the fireworks just because of the problems of locations to set them off. We've lost the areas we were using because of, there's, it's there now. So we're looking at a laser light show and we're looking at a drone light show with drones. The, the cost is out there. I've kind of polled the board now to find out where they are regarding the price. And then there's, there's gonna be some challenges, but we hope to have, we'll have more for you next time, once we get those numbers in.
Is the park gonna be ready for the Memorial Day weekend?
We will be ready for the Memorial Day weekend with things that are ready. They haven't been able to do anything this week because everything is wet and half under water. The splash pad is a hundred percent. As far as operations, there's a few shade structures that need to be put up. And we've, we've asked them that when their crews are back out here, that that is the first thing that they tackle. So we'll have that, that will be up and running for sure. While everything's dry.
So our Memorial Day openings, weekend openings, still good for the splash. I would like to, to thank the type A board for how hard they've worked on getting things going with Taco Bell. That has been back and forth and contentious, and I know that they, they had to drop back and punt a couple of times. But a lot of excitement about seeing that old yellow house come down. So thank you very much for all your, your voice down there, Shelley. All right. Item number four, discuss, discussion on the results of the May fourth, twenty twenty-four bond election. Mr. Peacock.
Well, the, despite the signs and some open houses and some information that we got out, it's still, the bond, the voters rejected both bond propositions. So I guess what I'm looking for now is direction from the council regarding the designers, the architects that are, and the construction company that have been put under contract for this project. I think it may be time to go ahead and end those contracts. There's no money stew, everything's been paid for at this point. But just to, I think, look at, start looking at a plan B and some other options which we know are out there. I think we need to clean up, go ahead and eliminate those contracts unless you guys wanna, the feeling is just to, to put it out again. I don't know, I don't know where y'all are on that. There are some options that have come up that I think are worth exploring. And my recommendation would be is that we go ahead and just end those contracts until we figure out a new plan.
Johnny, have you anything to say about that?
No, sir, I don't think we need to be putting the thing back out for a bond. I think the people have spoken twice and I think we ought to listen. And it's probably time to end those contracts.
Well, I disagree with not putting the bonds back out, but ending the contracts and not putting them out until we have a new plan is, is a good idea.
Is it?
Well, I have to say, maybe third time would be the charm, I don't know, like with the school one. But I have to agree about contract.
Father? Father? Sheldon?
I'm fine with it.
I think everybody's got bonneted. We've had bonds on ballots for five straight ballots now. As far as any of the contracts, I think that's, that's a good idea and we'll just drop back and punt and see what we can do. All right? Okay. And discuss the June twenty twenty-four city council meeting and staff attendance. Mr. Peacock. That is moving the date of the June.
I'm sorry, yeah, now I'm with you. I was trying to think of where, where that was. So next month, the council meeting falls on a date where myself, Amber, and Molly have been attending the Texas City Management Conference. So I guess the question is, is, is that enough of us that are gonna be out that we would reschedule? Or would you prefer to leave as is and we can just zoom into it and attend that way?
If I have an opinion?
Do we have an idea of an alternative? Moving it to a Tuesday or moving it to another day of the week or moving it to a different week altogether?
I was thinking of either the week before or the week after.
Week after will not work for me, I'll be in Africa.
Week after, that's right after, or the day of your surgery, twenty-seventh, isn't it?
It's Wednesday, the day before, but I'll be here Thursday, that's my problem.
Week after.
Yeah, be the twenty-seventh. We can send out a, like a poll for you guys to go on to and then give you how that comes through. We will do that. Like I say, it's not, I did check on the calendar, there's nothing scheduled for that evening that we couldn't be a little late to if, if we even went. So I mean, it won't be, it won't be a problem zooming in if, if that's what we need to do. So I mean, it's... I'm happy with it.
So we're still okay with them sending out a poll and everybody just put your opinions and send them back to them? Sounds good. Okay, item number, or going to item E, updates from the mayor and council members and city staff members. Anybody have any updates in the night? Active, been doing anything fun? Staff? Can you hear them, Mike? The staff on update training?
No, the only update I have, provide, provides you executive session.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we move into public forum, presentations and recognition. Did anybody sign up to speak during public forum? No? Okay. So if you'll excuse me for just a moment, I get to come out and do the fun part of this job. During this evening, I get the opportunity to present a proclamation. Whereas the city of Joshua takes immense pride in the accomplishments and contributions of its young citizens who exemplify dedication, talent, and excellence in various fields. And whereas Jackson Dial, a thirteen-year Joshua ISD student, has demonstrated exceptional achievements in versatility, excelling in academics, music, theater, debate, and computer science. And whereas Jackson has been an award-winning bandsuit for seven years, a state-level policy, and, excuse me, it says CX, I don't know what that stands for. So, the Vator, and has also participated in Inquirer Theater showcasing his diverse talents and commitment to well-rounded education. And whereas Jackson has shown outstanding focus on academics and academic U I L, particularly in computer science U I L, where his dedication over the past four years has resulted in numerous first-place finishes at invitational, district, and regional events. And whereas, under Jackson's leadership as captain, the Joshua Computer Science team achieved a historic top finish at the team level, enabling the team to advance and compete at the state level in Austin. And whereas Jackson's remarkable performance at state competition culminated in a perfect score and a first-place win, earning him the title of state champion and bringing honors recognition to himself, his team, and the Joshua community. And whereas Jackson will continue his academic journey at the University of Texas, Austin, focusing on computer science and maintaining his passion for music with a long-horned band. Now therefore, I, Scott Kim, will bear the city of Joshua, do hereby proclaim May twentieth as Jackson Dial Day. In the city of Joshua, in recognition of his outstanding achievements, leadership, and the inspiration he provides to his peers and the entire community. In witness thereof, I have superior to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Joshua to be affixed on the sixteenth day of May, twenty twenty-four. Now, the other thing that I found out this evening, Jackson and his team in the team competition finished fourth. So he has his team here with him this evening and they're sponsored from the school. And I would also like to present challenge points to each of the members of the team, if that is okay with you.
Awesome job, guys. Thank y'all.
At this time, I am going to present the oath of office to our two councils, the first who were re-elected. No, Charlie, please stand.
Oh, you're gonna do her first?
You're doing both things.
I'm gonna do both at the same time, that's fine.
Okay. I state your name.
I'm alright, stand.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or firm.
Or firm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Council member.
Council member four.
Six.
For the city of Joshua.
For the city of Joshua.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability.
And do the best of my ability.
To preserve.
To preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
Defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, congratulations.
I see.
Okay. Moving on to item G, the consent agenda. Discuss considering possible action on the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. Ms. Holloway or Mr. Peacock? Does everyone, I think we should make her talk.
The minister here, I think she indicated she made a couple of changes this morning that somebody mentioned to her. I believe they're submitting for your approval.
All right, does anybody have any comments, suggestions? No? Okay, I'll accept the motion?
Make a motion to approve it, yes.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mike Kidd, seconded by Johnny. Sorry. To accept the minutes as presented, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, moving on to item H, our regular agenda items. Number one, discuss considering possible action on an ordinance repealing existing section six point zero two point zero one three, assessment of expenses, lien, appeal, and section six point zero two point zero one five additional authority to abate dangerous weeds without prior notice of Articles six point oh two, nuisance generally, abatement of chapter six, health and sanitation of the code of ordinances, and replacing it with new section six point zero two point one five additional authority to abate dangerous weeds without prior notice. Mr. Welch?
Mayor and council, this is a lot of words to get to kind of a pretty simple place. Last year, we, we had an issue during the summer with some mowing that did not occur. It was necessary for the city to hire a contractor to go out there and mow and my patients didn't work, a few other things didn't work. So we incurred expense with that and the ordinance at the time provides that, provided that someone could appeal that, the determination, whatever the amount is. When we go out there and we do the mowing, they get, the landowner gets a letter from the city saying this is the property we did it on, how much it costs, and you can pay that, if you don't pay that, I'll leave and be assessed against your property. It also provides that you can go through an appeal process. And so that occurred. And the problem, the problem with, that we encountered is, in this situation is, the notice went out for the appeal hearing and then it was an attorney who represented the landowner. The attorney got the email, we determined, but they didn't, don't ask me why, it wasn't open. And we had, we had documentation of that. So we went forward with the appeal hearing and Mike appealed the amount and a lien was eventually filed in the records. But what we encountered was, they wanted to go back, the attorney contacted us and said, well, I'm sorry we missed the hearing, but we wanna go and have another hearing. And, and so what the result is, if we go through that process, we wind up sending more money with hearings than we even have on the lease sometimes. Because we have to bring in the person who did the mowing on the property. In that case, in the, in the situation last summer, he testified, I mean, it's, it's an informal hearing, it was done via Zoom, but he, we have to kind of get him and we coordinate the, the, the time. And we all get together and then we then go, no one's here for the other side, they got notice, we know they got notice. They come back and say, well, let's do it again, we, we're sorry, we missed it, we didn't open the email with the notice that Alice sent. So the proposed ordinance is to avoid going through all that hearing process. And if someone wants to appeal that, for whatever reason they wanna appeal it, they provide a written notice to Mike explaining why they believe the process, well, either it costs too much or whatever. And, and the only, the only issue on the appeal is the amount of the, of the, of the, the mowing or the services that were rendered. So it's a pretty straightforward appeal. So this ordinance makes a written appeal, they have ten days after they, after they've received, if we send a notice to them that, that, that we had to mow and hear the cost. They can give us a written appeal, they can tell us what the reasons were for the appeal, why they're appealing it. Mike then has, after they respond to, to Mike, he has fifteen days to act. If he opposes the, the finding of the cost, then the, the lien gets filed in the property records. If he doesn't, he can make whatever decision he makes, he can, he can decrease it, for example, if we feel that the amounts are excessive. I, I will tell you that it's gonna be rare to ever have the amounts be excessive because we have to pay an outside contractor to do it, so it's nothing more than the cost that we incur. But this makes it, in, in the event someone goes, oh, I didn't get the, the notice. Well, now, they knew that the lien was, that the mowing had been done, they'd gotten the letter from us, but here, here was the amount. This now gives them ten days for them to kind of, to them, for them to write out a reason why they, they wanna appeal that decision. Then again, Mike, Mike considers it and makes a determination. So I think it would provide a little more, a little more, it, it's a tim, it's a timelier process. And when they get that notice initially, they know they have ten days to get back with us in writing. So they can't say, well, I didn't open the letter or it went to the wrong place, or I didn't open the email. So this is just amending that process and these are the, just the ordinance that does so. So we, I'd ask for your consideration for approval tonight. Are there any questions? I'd have to answer it.
What if they don't open the letter, we send them with the bill?
Well, then they, they would, they would lose their right to appeal then. Because we, we, it's ten days from the day we send the letter and everything's going to, here in the city. So there's no, there's no issue. I, I believe in, in the la, in last year's situation, we delivered hand notice if I remember correctly.
So any discussion? Okay, I'll accept the motion?
Make a motion, we accept the proposed amendment.
I'll second it.
Okay. I've got a motion by Shelley, seconded by Angela, to accept the change in the ordinance, repealing the old ordinance and putting the new ordinance in. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, item number three, discuss considering possible action on a temporary, or excuse me, item two. Discuss considering possible action on an ordinance amending the code of ordinances by adding alternate positions to the animal control advisory board and setting designated regular meeting dates.
All right, this is just a kind of catch, an attachment to what we did with type A and B, the two alternates on the animal control board. My understanding is that that board approved it unanimously. Is that right?
No, it was just brought by Alice, it would be a better idea to make that an alternate.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought the board agreed.
And then setting a, a specific schedule so that it can be put on the calendar well in advance of the dates of meeting. I think that's what, what this other part of it was.
That is what they wanna do is to go ahead and schedule them.
Three dates.
Additional ones add now.
I think it's a third Tuesday of each quarter or something like that, or every four months or whatever. I, I think it's a third Tuesday of each quarter or something like that, or every four months or whatever. So it's what, what was discussed. Um, and again, part of the reasoning on that is just so people that are on those boards can plan and schedule things around it and, and know that they have the set meetings, it's, it's the purpose.
Yeah. It's kind of hard because it, it, it is kind of random and, but I'm the chairman and I'm usually the one that's not there. Yeah, because you can't schedule when cows are calving or, or mowing needs done, and I get caught up in stuff on the way home and I forget because it's not on the front of my mind, so. I think this is, that's what's driving this, and I'm, I'm all for it, being the chairman of the board because it, it will help me to have it structured a little bit more. Um, and then, uh, and then I think all the, the board members will agree that if we have a structure, then we can say, well, that day is set aside for it. I'm all for it. Hey, I'm all for it. Yeah.
Mayor?
Any other discussion or comment?
There's Alice. Alice has a comment, Mayor.
Yeah. Sorry if any background noise, I got a little one with me. Um, this was brought up at the end of the last month's council meeting about getting alternates. And so I've emailed, talked to all the board members a couple of times to set up a good date. Um, the third week is the best week for the city because we got boards the first and second. And talking to the doctor and several other ones, the third Tuesday of every, it's three times a year set on there. Of course, it's, that's just regular meetings, they can have special meetings anytime. That helps. It's just more like Mike said, just setting a structure up so everyone's aware when a meeting's going to happen.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mike Kidd, seconded by Johnny, uh, to accept the ordinance, adding alternate positions to the animal control advisory board and setting designated regular meeting dates. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, item number three, discuss considering possible action on a temporary right of entry access and inspect and perform work agreement. Mr. Peacock?
Mayor, this is an agreement that we were working on last month. We're doing a, a small drainage project. Um, the back of the property is elder, I'm sorry, yeah, elder elementary, uh, back in the far corner where it, uh, abuts some of the streets in Cooper Valley. There's some water that's holding and ponding there. The drainage that was put in, was built, um, has been altered by a property owner some time ago. Um, unintentionally with a swimming pool and some other things in his backyard. So we're going to put in, uh, a couple of drains to run this water out to the street underground. And this is, this is just the agreement for, for the property owner. We'll, we'll, we'll run this line, we've already got one with the school. Or this one is for the school, we al- we've already secured one with the property owner. And their board approved it at their last meeting.
Any questions? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
We accept the prior right of entry and this and the inspect and perform work agreement.
I have a motion by Angela, seconded by Dakota, to, uh, accept the right of entry, access, inspect, and perform work agreement. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, item number four, discuss considering possible action regarding a type B corporation appointment. We have one application on file. Ms. Finley?
Philly.
Philly, I'm sorry. So, um, having trouble with my glasses. Okay, um, Carol?
Yes.
Okay, Carol. Um, glad you were here this evening. Uh, I understand you've been pretty active since you've moved into our community.
Right on the neighbor, you've got to be careful with the messy neighbors.
All right, and, uh, uh, so you, you understand what the, the, uh, position would be and, and it's just a, a alternate position right now? Okay, just, just an alternate position? Uh, so, uh, anybody have any questions for her? Okay.
I'm glad to see anybody that's willing to volunteer.
Yes.
Well, good having.
You got me.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Make a motion to approve the application.
Okay. Okay, I've got a motion by Mike, seconded by Johnny, to, uh, appoint Carol Philly to the type B as, uh, alternate number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much and congratulations. Uh, staff reports, anybody have any question on any of the staff reports? Okay. Uh, it is now seven oh seven at this time, the city council, city of Joshua will recess into executive session. A closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one, subsection D, Texas Government Code to discuss the following. Pursuit, pursuant to section five five one point oh seven one and five five one point oh seven four of Texas Government Code to discuss and deliberate about personnel and consultation with the town attorney to discuss legal issues as associated with city improviser personnel, city manager direct reports, and all matters incident and related thereto. We are recessed. All this meeting back to order at seven forty seven, there's no action to be taken from the executive concession, executive session. Uh, is there any future agenda item requests to be made from the council? I'd like to see the, uh, give us any more information next month. Okay, hearing done, this meeting is adjourned at seven forty eight.